Fine, you're right.
Okay, I'll call this township council meeting, the township agenda meeting, November 22, 2011 to order at 7:30 PM. Roll call, let's do the flag slip on the roll call. Flag slip, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Dan. Congratulations. On the film, right, with the awards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Council President, D. Piero.
Here.
Also present are Mayor Barbario, Ms. Lim, our business administrator, Justin Marqueta for John Iglesino, and Alicia Johnson, our township clerk. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular township council meeting of November 29, 2011. Formal action may or may not be taken. Statement of compliance, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 15, 2010, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record and the Star Ledger and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 16, 2010. Note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on cable vision, public access channel 21 at 2:00 PM on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www.parcipani.net. Okay, presentations. If I may call Pastor Timothy Chen, Pastor Janice Coruncho, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
And Pastor Manny Lo.
Welcome, gentlemen.
And Mayor Barbario will be our receiver.
Good evening, gentlemen, how are you today? First of all, I would like to thank your Christian Church of New Jersey, our Chinese Church of New Jersey, for your kindness to Parcipani Troy Hills, to the PAL, to the library, and to the township of Parcipani Troy Hills. You know, it's members like you in our community that keep the pride of Parcipani alive and well, so thank you.
Just to share a few words, our church is on Beverwick Road, we've been a big part of this community, we're going 700 strong, and what a lot of the people in our church, we encourage them to do is to be involved in the community. And so what we've done is we did a yard sale to get rid of a lot of excess that we had, and we put that excess to good use. The money that we raised for the yard sale, we would like to give back to the town that we are a part of. And just want to share with you a little thing from our scriptures that's an encouragement that we encourage our church, and it says this in Titus, it says, "Remind them to be submissive to the rulers and authorities, to be obedient, to be ready for every good work, to speak evil of no one, to avoid quarreling, to be gentle, and to show perfect courtesy toward all peoples." And so that's what our church is striving to do, to obey these scriptures and to be involved in our community here in Parcipani. I think the first presentation will be from Pastor Manny for the victims of the Lake Hiawatha, in the Lower Lake Hiawatha from Hurricane Irene. Pastor Manny, would you like to present the check?
I would like to thank you. It was a very trying time down in Lake Hiawatha, other areas of Parcipani during that flood. But one thing I learned as being the mayor, we became a community even stronger, and this is really going to go a long way, and the residents and the flood victims in Lake Hiawatha truly, from their heart, appreciate what you've done. I thank you very much. Thank you.
The next presentation will be from Pastor Timothy Chen to the PAL, we purchased the defibrillator for PAL. And last but definitely not least, we would like to present the church, a check, not a church, a check to the Parcipani Public Library.
Thank you so much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, status of adopted ordinances, they're all effective November 15, 2011. Scheduled meetings, November 29, 2011, at 7:30 PM, regular meeting, public invited with public participation. December 6, 2011, at 7:30 PM, agenda meeting, public invited with public participation. Minutes for approval of November 11, 2011, and the regular meeting of November 18, 2011.
Those are October, sir.
I'm sorry, October. Any corrections or additions to those? Okay. Okay, now we have the discussion regarding Irene remediation and mitigation expenses for the main library.
We have Jane Beeline and Roberto Chapco here. I'm presenting this to the council because this was included as part of the emergency resolution that was adopted a few months ago related to Hurricane Irene. At this point, we don't know whether insurance is going to cover this, nor whether FEMA will cover any of these expenses. The issue with the insurance is that most of it had to do with, may have had to do with a structural issue with the building itself rather than an actual event such as Hurricane Irene. The JIF believes, the JIF appraiser believes that the extent of the mold that was in the walls was such that it probably did not, was not as a result of Hurricane Irene, but as a result of earlier flooding. But regardless, if it was earlier, we're hoping that it was probably that March flood, was it March or April, I can't remember?
March.
The March flood, and we did put in the claim early enough so that it should be covered for the March. But at this point, we still don't know whether it's going to be covered by insurance nor by FEMA, and I just wanted the council to be aware of that before the library authorizes the contract to proceed with the remainder of the work. I just wanted the council to be aware of it. The total cost is $200,000.
Is that the intent of the administration for this to be an emergency appropriation for 2011, or are we going to budget this in 2012?
You have already made that emergency appropriation.
So this is lumped in with that?
Yes, this was part of the $500,000, $580,000 that the council adopted a few months ago, and with the thought that any FEMA reimbursement, insurance reimbursement would offset what we would have to increase in next year's budget.
Okay.
And I'm just letting you know that we don't know that any of this $200,000 will be offset.
Right. I just wanted to explain what's been happening at the library. We haven't been able to use the lower level of the library since the hurricane. We first had to have mold remediation work done because there, we found behind the walls that there was moisture there, and the air quality testing, although good, the board decided to go ahead and have the walls taken out and the moisture remediated. After that, there's additional air quality testing, you see the charges for that on this list. With the French drains, waterproofing, pumps, and electrical, I went out and got eight, I believe it's eight or seven estimates of people, I actually tried to solicit more estimates, I had about 10 estimates, but seven came through with quotes, so I have that information for you also. But we're recommending that we go with this GM Masonry, George McGee, a local contractor. The auditors ruled that this did not have to go out to bid because it's considered an emergency, we have to remediate the problem. If we don't fix it by adding extra drains, we'll incur, we'll have this problem again. So that's why it's considered an emergency. And then the walls and cove molding had to be taken out so that everything could dry out and mold wouldn't grow in this area, so that's what you see on here. Part of the reason we encountered this problem was the generator pumps, the pumps weren't working, we don't have a generator at the library. You'll recall during Hurricane Irene that the electricity went out for a long period of time, so our water, the water pumps that we do have stopped working because of this emergency, because of this hurricane, and so as a result, we do need to install a generator so it won't happen ever again. And then the architect's project fees are listed on here. Does anyone have questions? I also have the remediation contractor.
Jasmine, I have just one quick question. So the $200,000 is part of that $500,000?
Yes, the resolution which was adopted.
But unfortunately, it's not going to be covered.
We don't know at this point, and it may be that it will not be covered.
And where does it come out of, just our general fund?
Yes.
Surplus, right, our general surplus for the town?
It would come out of the 2012 budget.
Okay.
And the emergency, any emergency funds that we have to raise in the 2012 budget is outside of the cap.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
I don't have anything to, of course.
Any questions from the?
What we need to know, though, is if we can go ahead and contract for the French drains water, for these expenses.
What do you need, Jasmine, a vote tonight, or a straw poll, or?
I think, I think a straw poll would be fine.
Okay, Mrs. Johnson, you want to just take a straw poll and see if we, the council agrees that we should expend this, these dollars?
Mr. Karifi to agree?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero to agree?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara to agree?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton to agree?
Yes.
Mr. D. Piero to agree?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jane, no, Ms. Beeline, I'm sorry, and just for the record, so the people know, it looks like the person that's going to do it for us is going to do everything.
That's correct.
And meets every requirement, and one, two, three, out of the six bids, pretty much beat out all of them, almost.
That's right, that's right.
And the other two who were?
Lower, aren't, they're not complete quotes.
They're not doing anything.
Right, right.
They're practically not doing anything.
Exactly.
Okay, well, they're doing something, but?
Right, but it's not the complete.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so objectively, objectively, we've got someone who's going to do everything for way less.
That's right, right, and it's someone who's a resident of Parcipani.
Understood.
And has done other, for other projects for the town.
It was also significantly below the architect's estimate, wasn't it?
Oh, definitely, I should mention that. This entire amount, the architect projected as $317,000, and we were able to get it to the $200,000 point, so it's really significantly lower than what he had projected.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I may bring something up?
Yeah.
At our last meeting, I just saw him walk in, Mr. Rosenthal, where he went, but he had asked us, he said he was even willing to cut a check for $100 to see if we would mail letters to him at a Parcipani mailing address. He lives in Parcipani, but he has a Morris Plains mailing address. So what I did was, I personally mailed him two letters, one with a Parcipani, New Jersey 07950, zip code, which is Morris Plains. He did receive that letter within two days, even though I put the town of Parcipani and I used that, I used Morris Plains zip code, he did receive that letter. He then in turn sent one back to me, which I received within two days. I also sent him one using his street address with a Parcipani, New Jersey 07054, Parcipani's zip code. That letter is still out there somewhere.
Wait, how did you do the second one?
The second one, I used Parcipani, New Jersey 07054.
Yeah, that, that won't go.
That, that's still out there, but the first one that I did, I mailed them the same day, I used Parcipani, New Jersey 07950, which is Morris Plains' zip code. He did receive that letter within two days.
Which is proof that they do route the letters by zip code.
I spoke to the postmaster of Mount Taber, and he said that if you were to send it to 0950, and you put Parcipani on, it would get to that address. He said they sort by zip code. I spoke to him on, God, actually at the rodeo beefsteak, Mike, at the rodeo beefsteak. We were discussing it, and he says, no, if you send it to a zip code, they sort by zip code, it'll go to that address.
Now, the question is, if we make this public knowledge and instruct everyone to do this, is it going to backfire on us?
It could, because others might not get there, and that's, that's an issue you might have.
Huh?
If bills are late, or checks like retirement checks, social security checks, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the township's responsibility to dictate that. You'd have to get Rodney Freelandheiser involved, and the federal government have to dictate it, because the post office is a federal building and it's run by the federal government. So we can, what we can do, Rich, is we can contact Rodney Freelandheiser and tell him what our councilman, Paul Karifi, did in regards, and the federal, the federal government would have to take, take steps to say to the residents of Parcipani, you can use Parcipani, New Jersey 07950, because you don't want to, what you don't want to do here, and no disrespect, Mr. Rosenthal, is to, I don't want to tell every resident of Parcipani, you know what, you can put Parcipani, New Jersey down, 07950, and then important bills don't get to their houses and stuff like that, that would be disingenuous of us. The federal government will have to step in, and they would have to make the decision.
Rich, before you get up, for the record, I sent mine out, too. I haven't gotten my, I haven't gotten my letter to you back. I didn't put a $100 check in it. I put, I put a little note to you saying hello, but I have not received my letter back yet.
Yes, you may. I mean, it's up to, I'm not the council president, sorry.
Well, we're on this topic, go ahead.
Well, I only got one that was from Councilman Karifi, it was a jail to Parcipani, it was Parcipani 07950.
Well, mine's date stamped, so when it comes back, I'll show you.
I sent him back, he said he received it. I don't accept anything from the federal government, they'll do it a week after they balance the budget, and you know it's not going to happen. The way you do it, and the way, if you're going to write to Rodney Freelandheiser, been there, done that, he got it, he can get back, and it's, and it's going to die. I'm concerned about, my wife, I was calling 911, somebody's life was at danger, it was my wife, okay? I don't really care about the other stuff, what happened before, when they list Littleton School as one of the top schools in the nation, in Morris Plains. Been there, done that. What you have to do, you've got to embarrass these guys, and it's not illegal, is you mail the letters, you go to the post office, and you said, we are mailing them, we are mailing them to Parcipani, send something innocuous, you know, I didn't realize you were going to get to it this evening, I actually brought with me a box of envelopes, stationery, and I have the stamps in my hand, and I was going to say, go mail it. Go mail it.
Rich, I did my-
That's one.
Rich, excuse me, I did my, when I went to the post office, the clerk, who I see every week, took my letter and said, you know, there's no, oh, you're going to kill me, your street, your street is?
Cambridge.
Cambridge. There's no Cambridge in Parcipani. I said, do me a favor, just please mail the letter, so I haven't received it back yet.
All I want you to do initially, send something innocuous, Merry Christmas, drive safely during the holidays, it's too late for Thanksgiving, send something that's not a bill, send something out there. I brought in the envelopes, I brought in the paper, I didn't even want to cost the town any money on this thing, because I'm calling the shot now. You go to the paper, you get your reporters here, I got great coverage, I didn't even expect it, from the patch, I got it from Cindy Faris, who wrote a brilliant article, I thought, on this thing, and send something, have a good holiday. Nobody's going to complain, cover your base when you send out your bills, cover your things so nobody gets hurt and everybody gets it in time. If you don't do it, it's not going to happen, and it's going to go to the federal government to die. That's what the big fight is about with the government now, nothing happens. The bigger issue here than, I hear you saying, is that you want the whole township to be Parcipani, New Jersey. Oh, I didn't say the whole. Well, that's what, my point is, that's what it would have to be, because in order, like you, 911 call, like you said, you have a Morris Plains address, so they need to recognize your area of Parcipani as Parcipani, and they warrant, and that's, I think that's a, that's a bigger issue at hand. I'm willing to do this, I can tell you, I'm willing to say, okay, we'll call Rodney Freelandheiser, we'll have him come here, we'll sit, me, you, and him will sit down, and we'll discuss it, how we can get it where a 911 call, Cambridge, Morris Plains, New Jersey, is recognized as Morris Plains, New Jersey on a cellphone. Actually, she said Morris Township. My feeling, my thing was, I don't want to get involved with Lake Hiawatha, they have their own section, they're very proud of it, I don't want to get involved with Mount Taber, they're very proud of it. Jasmine lives in where, Denville? Rainbow Lakes. You know what I'm talking about?
Denville mailing address.
Excuse me, Denville. Right. That's what I meant. Denville, I don't want to get involved with the people who have their own communities within this area. Lake Parcipani, same thing, it's going to go to Lake Parcipani. I get involved with them, it dies, because they're all, hey, well, how dare we live in Mount Taber, we live, we live here. I live in another municipality, Jasmine lives in another municipality, other municipalities are Morristown, and I really am not going to go, you know, and it's going to happen, it'll go to the federal government, they'll give you a reason, they always tell you they can't do it, they can't do it, everybody tells you they can't do it. I agree, I mean, I agree with you. So take something innocuous, Merry Christmas, from the town. I'll do it for you. I won't feel bad if I don't get it.
Well, she told me, she goes, we, she goes, we don't have, I said, just mail it, please. And she put it, she stamped, she stamped it.
Now I got to get you guys to do it.
I did it!
Not more than one.
Oh.
Send me.
Want me to do another one? Would you like me to do another one?
Yeah, that's two, I suppose. Just three.
Do another one for you tonight.
It's like punching, the punch in the water against the tide.
I did what she asked me. He did what she asked me.
Thank you, Rich. Okay, back to the agenda.
Thank you, Rich, anyway.
Administration, bids taken, November 7.
We went over, yeah, he missed, he missed the township clerk, yes, sir.
Our township clerk approving the 2012 calendar meeting schedule.
I have, I haven't looked at it yet, I'll send an, I mean, email to you, Ms. Johnson.
Well, we've, we've put, the only dates that are in contention were December 2012, whether it be the first and second Tuesdays, or the second and third Tuesdays. And Jasmine's recommending the second and third Tuesdays, which gets us closer to the holidays, but if we have any ordinances to introduce, we can still do it in October and still have, have time to do it.
Exactly.
So the way the calendar is now, it's the second and third Tuesdays, the way Alicia did it, since I don't have a 2012 calendar yet, I'll go on faith that she did it right, and we can always, this is just for, this is an agenda meeting, so we can approve it at our regular meeting next week.
Of course, sir.
But we can also tweak it beforehand, too, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments on that? All right. Mayor, none submitted.
Can I just add something? I didn't get it to you guys in time.
I was going to add something between this, too, but go ahead.
No. I, I've been in contact with the president of the Glenmont Commons Association, and we've been in contact with the BPU, and the BPU is going to set up a meeting with Georgia Central Power and Light over this latest storm that we had, and they're going to invite residents and mayors of towns and elected officials, so we're going to be working on setting that up with them, well, they'll be setting it up. I also have, if you want it, I can actually just put in your mailboxes, an update of Parks and Forestry, and where they are with the debris and the limbs that they're picking up on a, we have an eight, we figured approximately eight weeks, we'd have the township pretty much cleaned up. Right now, we're on track, but you just never know, if any other storm, locusts, something like that might come, so.
Okay, I was going to squeeze something in here, too, at this point, the Parcipani Hills High School Vikings.
Yep.
Going to the state championship, Kane College, was it a week and a half now, or?
December 3.
December 3.
10 o'clock.
And I'm going.
So am I.
Good luck, Vikings.
I'm playing quarterback.
There you go, thanks, Rich.
There goes the L's.
Okay, bids taken, November 7, 2011, 11:00 AM, pumping station number four, bypass pumping project, awarded?
It's not awarded, we're recommending award to the low bidder, which is rock solid construction from Newark, New Jersey, and the bid price is $178,092. And Pat, I apologize for not getting it on the agenda, we'll try to do that next time, but I'm giving you the information.
Okay, and a bid to be taken, December 2, 11:00 AM, installation of a 30 KW roof-mounted solar panel array for the community center and tennis facility. No quotations or proposals or qualifications?
Let me just note, we, we have gone out with both the property and casualty insurance and the health insurance. Next week, we will, we plan to discuss the health insurance with you, it looks like there will be no change, and the first meeting in December, we'll be ready to discuss the property and casualty insurance with you.
When?
The first meeting in December.
Ordinances for, I guess this is introduction, ordinance of the township Parcipani Troy Hills and the County of Mark, New Jersey, authorizing acquisition by purchase of property identified as block 734, lot 4, on the tax map of the township, Parcipani Troy Hills and commonly known as 460 South Beverick Road, the Baldwin House.
Just for the public, the agreed upon purchase price is $672,750.
Which, for the public's knowledge, comes out of the historical, right?
The open space trust fund.
The open space, okay.
Well, it comes out of the open space portion.
Exactly, which is not a tax increase, it's already been taken.
Right.
For the public.
Okay, the next two are parking fire zones, 2011 colon 26, 2011 colon 27, and 2000 colon 28 is parks, recreation areas, and public lands, Article 1 of the Code of the Township Parcipani Troy Hills.
Those are for the no fees increase.
Yeah, do you want to comment on that, Jasmine?
Pat DeFalco, the golf superintendent, is here.
We are proposing an increase of $3 and $6.
I'll just state your name so it's on the tape.
Patty DeFalco, golf superintendent, no country club. We're proposing an increase of $3 per round of golf at the east and west for township residents, and $6 per round for non-residents, and a slight fee of $1.50 per round increase for cart rentals. I guess, as we all know, we've had a horrific year from a revenue standpoint, starting way back in the spring, and this is very fitting, this weather we're having today, which has killed my business. today, which has killed my business today, it's gonna kill tomorrow. It's been continuing. It's just been horrific. And we need these increases to keep us healthy and viable, and to continue to deliver the product that we've been delivering over the years.
As a result of the, what you're saying, the bad year we've been having, how much did, no pun intended, how much were we in the hole?
Or underwater, you mean?
Huh?
Or underwater.
How much were we underwater?
Yeah.
Well, I tried.
I understand. No problem. I, right now, I believe we're gonna be about $300,000 plus in the hole.
And the increase will bring us back up?
Yes. The increase, the way this rounds out, I think we will receive between $325,000 to $340,000. This is based on a rounds of golf estimated from 2010. Now, I don't have a crystal ball, but I cannot see a year anywhere near this. And I think we'll have an excellent year next year, weather-wise, weather permitting.
And this will bring us back to where we need to be?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And hopefully start building our surplus. We've accomplished quite a few projects over the years. We're still looked upon as one of the best in the state. By the way, these rates are still, the increases that we're having, are still well under the county rates.
And Pat, unlike sewer and water utilities, okay, yes, this, golf is also a user utility. However, not everyone uses the golf, like everyone uses water and sewer.
Right.
Okay. So really, whoever chooses to go and play golf has to pay the fee.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
It's not an increase in general taxes, just the utility fees?
The no country club is completely self-supporting. It's run as a utility, proven at equal expense. It has not been a burden to the taxpayers of this town for the past, well, since, actually, from prior year was mayor.
Twenty years on here.
Because it's only who plays golf.
Yes.
The month of August was just devastating. I mean, I don't think you gotta run one round of golf in August. I mean-
It started in spring, in March, April, and it just continued on right through. Plus, we caught several hundred-degree days, which always impacts, it just, horrific year. You just can't call it anything else but that.
We had, what, four holes underwater at the east?
Six.
Six.
And we lost, actually, we lost-
The ones that run right along the Rockaway River were completely underwater.
Right. Well, we lost five fairways. And we spent an inordinate amount of money. We lost our traps on the east. We lost the fairways. And we did it all in-house. We didn't actually have to buy the material. But we brought the course back in a matter of maybe, I don't know, two and a half weeks, you might say. And hopefully, we don't have any more flooding down in that area. This shouldn't do it, that's for sure.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Pat. Okay. Resolutions. Authorizing agreements and actions to be taken in connection with the Morris County Improvement Authorities, County of Morris Guaranteed Renewable Energy Program.
This is for the solar project at the library. It's 85 kilowatts. It's a big project. They were able to actually put solar panels on the roof and in the parking lot as canopies. And just so that you can, for comparison's sake, the solar project that's being proposed for the community center is only going to be 20 to 30 kilowatts. So this is a sizable project. It's a great project.
Okay. Resolution appointing Anthony Ambuco Esquire as special legal counsel and fire prevention attorney for 2011. Is that correct, 2011?
Yes.
And we're doing appointment now?
This is the retro appointment, right?
Yes. We didn't get the, all of the paperwork until recently, so...
Okay. All right. And approving emergency purchases, twin disc clutch assembly at the new road pump station.
Yes. And the cost of that was $25,997.
Okay. No engineering report or no changes on the engineering report. Chief Financial Officer, you gonna cover that, Jasmine?
Yes. The first is issuing a duplicate tax shelter certificate. The second is donating abandoned property that is in the possession of the police department to the PAL, so that the PAL can dispose of it or donate it to other agencies.
Okay.
And the last one is cancel, canceling two grant fund receivables and reserve, reserve
All right. Now, you have to attorney. Authorize the memorandum of understanding between the township of Parsippany Troy Hills and the New Jersey State Department of Community Affairs.
We, we were approached by DCA to participate with them in building group homes using township housing trust fund monies and monies from DCA. If we put up a million dollars, DCA will put up a half million dollars. And it's, it's a good way to spend our money and to leverage our own funds. It's specifically for group homes. We can decide what level of participation we're willing to get ourselves involved in. I would recommend that we go the full million with the half million match from DCA.
All right. I think we need some background here for the public. This money is, that we have in this account is-
The housing trust fund.
Is a housing trust fund. It's not tax dollars. It's, it's those developers that have built in Parsippany-
Which was my next question.
Must, must contribute, okay? Based on the number of office spaces or the square feet of office space that they have, they must contribute their fair share towards moderate and low-income housing. That goes into a special account, and that's the account we're talking about.
Not taxpayer money.
Now, now, there's one more thing that I, that I learned recently, is that if we do not utilize those dollars in some period of time, I don't know what the period of time is, the state will take that money from us.
Well, they threaten to.
But we will still have the obligation for moderate and low-income housing.
And, you know, we, and with group homes, we've had, we, we, I can't even remember what the total number of group homes is in Parsippany, but it may be close to 10 now. And they've always been good neighbors. We've not had any problems with the group homes.
This is correct. Right from the very first one in Lake Hiawatha. Never had a problem. Okay. Communications, correspondence, none. Applications, license. Alicia?
This is for a new established business for another limousine service in the township that at present has six vehicles. They have matched, they've made all their payments as far as the required fees and passed all their background checks.
Okay. Thank you. Now we get to the public hearing. All right. Open the meeting to the public on any subject whatsoever. You have five minutes. Come in, sign in, give your name and address for the record.
Roy Massmore, Ten Drummond Drive. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
See, the John's not here tonight, so his younger son, I guess, I'm only teasing. Your name's not there. I'm not trying to be disrespectful. Brian, let me know when I'm at three and a half minutes, please.
You're at three.
If you could pass this on to John, because I don't know when he'll be back again. Last month, he interrupted me when I asked for the sewer surplus, and he stated that I'd have to fill out an Oprah request. I'm not gonna repeat what I said last month, but many years ago, I got the handbook on the Oprah request, and when you're asking for a figure or something, it doesn't require an Oprah. You don't, that's why it's called OPRA, Open Public Records Act. I wasn't asking for the financials. So when he's here next month, I'll, I'll discuss it again. So where I'm at is, Mayor and Jasmine, I would like to have the sewer surplus figure next week, if possible. Now, I don't realize the number is not gonna be exact. You have receivables, I mean unpaid bills and accruals or whatever, but I would like to have that figure and the, and the reserve in the water department. Next topic. And it's too bad that I gotta bring this up again in my five minutes, but can the administration tell the public what the disciplinary action or the town reimbursement for the unauthorized use of Joe Plechus' car is when I'm done tonight? Because, Mayor and Business Administrator, you are the-
3:30, Roy.
I'm sorry?
3:30.
I'm at 3:30 already?
You have 3:30 left.
Oh, 3:30 left. Thank you.
That was quick.
Yes. I misunderstood you. Mayor and Business Administration, Administrator, you are the custodian of our township assets. And how we got that car and why we weren't keeping track of it is quite disconcerting to me, and I'm sure to a lot of the people. So I'd like to know if, tonight, or have a letter sent to me, so I can let the public know. You brought up insurance tonight, and that was on one of my questions, the JIF status. I hope that there will not be a special meeting this year, as there was three years ago, a couple of days after Christmas. The only two people in attendance were Cindy and myself. Thank God the news reporter was here. But tonight, I'd like to get an answer as where we stand with these insurance negotiations, and if any figures have been prepared yet for dividend allocation, if any. I still got plenty of time, huh, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay. Last topic. Last month, Mayor, on October 4th, you had submitted to the county judge regarding Daniel Moses' sentencing, a leniency letter on our township stationary, which I, I think is, this does not represent the residents of Parsippany.
No, it doesn't, Roy.
Okay, let me finish.
I will. I'll let you finish.
Then Natalie Davis got in touch with you to ask you about the letter, because there was a publication, both the Daily Record on the 5th and then the Star Ledger a couple of days later. And in, in the interview, I guess with Natalie, you had said, "I did not ask for leniency." However, I think the public should know, that ones that have not seen this letter, the last paragraph, first sentence, "I hope that the court will be lenient as possible when sentencing Daniel." Let me just make something that just happened last night in our neighborhood, and I'm sure it's a reflection on the drug use in this country, not just this town. It's out of control. We had another house robbed in Parsippany between nine, in Glacier Hills, right around the corner from Paul's house and my house. It was robbed at 9:00 a.m. to 4:30, because when the people came home from work, they saw their house ransacked. And the police have been doing an excellent job on it. So my point is with this, Mayor, I, I don't even, what you're thinking was, when you wrote that letter, and I think that the taxpayers, the residents of Parsippany, we, do an explanation.
Well, let me just say this-
And I'm done.
Okay. In my conversation with all the reporters, I never said leniency. I was called up by a reporter who asked me that the assistant prosecutor said that you asked for a reduction in sentence. I said, "That's impossible," because I don't even know what the sentence was at the time. And that was pretty much what was said in those conversations. Okay, as, as for the letter, you know, I'm gonna defer to the township attorney in regards to the letter. And with the fact of the matter, and you need to understand, Roy, and I don't know if you do, but I'm gonna make you understand it tight. Hold on. I support the police. I support the arrests, and I support the penalty and the conviction of this, okay? I support it. I don't think you're gonna get a mayor that supports the police department as much as I do. You talk about burglaries, and, you know, there's a lot of them. Our, our police department is diminishing because of a 2% cap. But I have to tell you, this year, we're gonna have to tackle it. We're gonna have to tackle it even more, because you were talking about, this has nothing to do with the letter. You were going about, you know, you went on about burglaries in your community, because I know you made the phone call today in regards to that. We're gonna tackle it. We're gonna hire more police officers. But the fact of the matter with the letter, and, and, you know, I wrote the letter. I'm not denying it whatsoever. I wrote it for a man that's an outstanding volunteer for the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, the father. But I, I support the police department. I support the arrests, and I support the conviction. And that's something you don't say to anybody, because I know you talk to people. They come to me. "No, Roy, I know. Believe me when I tell you." But I'm gonna, no, no, I'm gonna defer now to the township attorney. You had your time. Now it's my time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our office has prepared a letter that I'd like to read into the record. It's addressed to Mayor James R. Barbario from John P. Anglassino. Dear Mayor Barbario, I am writing a response to inquiries and allegations that have been raised regarding your letter written to you, I'm sorry, written by you to the Honorable David H. Ironson regarding Mr. Daniel Moses. You advise that you wrote the letter in response to a request from the Moses family following Mr. Moses' plea to conspiracy to distribute marijuana. The letter in question was erroneously characterized in court by a Morris County Assistant Prosecutor as inappropriate because, according to that Assistant Prosecutor, the Parsippany Troy Hills Police Department and federal authorities were involved in the investigation and prosecution of Mr. Moses. Such comment was misplaced because the subject letter did not reference the Parsippany Troy Hills Police Department nor any other law enforcement agency. In fact, the subject letter, based upon reasons set forth more fully below, was entirely legal, ethical, and appropriate. The issues raised regarding the appropriateness of the subject letter are undoubtedly born out of ignorance for the way in which our nation's legal system operates. In the American justice system, a period of time elapses between a criminal conviction or plea bargain arrangement and sentencing. During that time, the convicted individual may, and indeed typically does, call upon friends, family, employers, clergy, community leaders, and others to submit letters on his or her behalf to the court for purposes of familiarizing the court with the individual. This practice assists courts to arrive at and impose a just sentence under the unique circumstance of each case. This is a common and longstanding practice. I, meaning Mr. Anglassino, has personally been in contact with Morris County Prosecutor Robert Binacki, who has confirmed to me that the subject letter was not illegal. In fact, Prosecutor Binacki advised me that he supports the submission of these types of letters to the court, as they serve an important function in educating the court on the personal characteristics of the convicted person, so that the court may impose an appropriate sentence, given all available and relevant information about the convicted person. Furthermore, my office has conducted legal research regarding this issue and has found precedent supporting the propriety of the subject letter to the court. When imposing a sentence in New Jersey, courts must consider both aggravating and mitigating factors. We're citing State v. Marshall 123, New Jersey Reports, at page 1. It's a 1991 case. Included in the mitigating factors, the court may consider evidence of a defendant's civic, business, and philanthropic activities. That's at page 147. The subject letter directly addressed Mr. Moses' education as well as his civic, business, and philanthropic activities within the township. As such, the letter is legally appropriate. We also reviewed applicable ethical standards and find no breach of same. Accordingly, the subject letter was legal, ethical, and appropriate as it contained useful and relevant information to assist the court render an appropriate punishment for the crime committed. The subject letter is also consistent with common and longstanding practice exercised in various courts throughout the history of American jurisprudence, very truly yours, John P. Anglassino.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marquada. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Oh, Pat, before you start, Mayor, just unrelated to this previous topic. Jazz, when you get those surplus numbers, can you email?
I don't think I'm gonna be able to get surplus numbers. I, I mentioned-
The numbers that Roy was asking.
Yeah, but I mentioned that-
He's gonna get last year's numbers.
Oh, okay. You just email them if I can get them, too, or?
All we have is the, what, what is in the audit, which was also in the annual financial statement, or for surplus-
Gotcha. No problem. I'm sorry.
As of January 1st.
Which I already have access, which I already have access to.
Yes. Ruby, when she prepares the 2011 annual financial statement, will come up with an estimated-
Gotcha.
-surplus, a new estimated surplus. But she does not come up with that number during the year. She doesn't, she, she waits until the end of the year, and the annual financial statement is due in February of the next year. And then the auditors basically confirm the numbers in the annual financial statement.
Thank you. And one more issue regarding the car, the car ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously, it's personal to me, because myself and now freeholder Grassi drafted it. Is there any way we, I mean, rather, maybe we can create a bright line rule, and I mean, anyone jump in, a bright line rule in the ordinance that says, if you use the car and you use it more than what the mayor-
Authorizes.
...authorizes for it. And you know what? Me personally, because I, I am part of the legislative branch, perhaps the administration could craft that bright line language that can go into the ordinance, and we can all review it and possibly put it in the ordinance.
Just let me say this, Councilman.
Just let me say this, councilman.
Because I don't want to usurp you running the town.
And it's a personnel issue.
Yeah.
It's been handled, but it's a personnel matter.
Oh, no, I'm not addressing the Plesch affair.
You know, you know, there's legalities involved. I know you know that.
I'm looking at it prospectively, and me, I, I personally wouldn't want to write some language and say, "Here, mayor, you're, we're going to stick this in your ordinance."
Councilman, we're in the public portion of the meeting right now.
I know, he just said...
Mr. DePiero, Mr. President, I'm answering an issue that a resident brought up, but it's also something I worked on. So mayor, I, I understand, but I'm just talking about prospectively.
And I, and I thank Mr. Marquado for bringing it up.
Oh, yeah.
Pointing it out.
Thank you.
Good boy.
Five minutes is up.
And you, you cheated me out last week, so I'm going to ask for another minute.
I took up two minutes of your time.
Yes, thank you. But John, one thing I will say to that is, sorry, Papatacho 182 Hawkins Avenue. One thing I will say to that is that, to the car ordinance, is that the ordinance was made up, everybody accepted it. There were no cars to be handed out, not for any reason. Let's not start something giving somebody, "Oh, you can use it for a day. You can use it for..." No. They don't have cars, they're not supposed to, that's it. Seriously.
I cannot, I cannot answer for the administration.
I know, I know. But I'm just saying, think about that. Another thing is, is that the way it is, the way it was said to us was that Mr. Plesch took the car home for one day, he was told he couldn't have the car. He had it for many weeks after that, many weeks after that. I know that for a fact also, because I was contacted. But what I am saying to you is that is also theft from the township. Okay? Now, if this is the case, it definitely has to be looked into, okay? It's taxpayers' money being wasted. That's unpleshy. Did that one. Okay, Friday, I was down a quick check, and I've mentioned this before, and I've told you about it before. Lots of town employees, when they have town cars, town trucks or whatever, they just park wherever the heck they want. I mean, they'll park in handicap, they'll park in the yellow lines with the fire zones. I got one for you Friday afternoon. I'll give it to you, because I don't want to say that in public, but enough is enough. I mean, we've got people that don't know how to drive as it is out there, and then we have people pulling all those illegal things, and they're town employees, they're supposed to, you know, present themselves. Did that turf field thing for Veterans Park, was it? What, when you were going to redo the...
The repair?
That go through and everything?
Yes, all done.
And it's all, you're all doing it, how too late, damn, didn't think about it.
Which came out of open space, right, Jasmine?
Yeah.
No tax increase.
Right, right. $300,000 for a turf field. Okay. Now, I, I'm so grateful...
Well, that's the merits of the price. I'm just talking about the tax increase.
Yes, I understand that. But I'm so grateful, this isn't on, is it? It is?
Yeah, I think.
Okay. It's just that $300,000 on a turf field. Now, I read the Patch article yesterday. I'm so glad that FEMA and everybody got together with the town, the people in Lake Hiawatha yesterday. And I didn't think about it until after that, and I said, "You know, open space money can be used for that." And I know you had that idea in your head now, and I want it to be stuck there, because I'm going to request that you seriously do not touch open space money anymore right now. We've already spent almost $900,000 in the last couple of months. But can we hold off from buying anything else, fixing anything else, especially unnecessary things? A turf field is not necessary. You've got people that are without homes, that don't know how they're going to get their homes fixed, and this is money that could go to them. I'd rather help my neighbors out and make sure...
Only the open space portion, Pat.
Right, I know. But that's the portion this $300,000 came from.
No, it came from the recreation refurbishment portion of the open space.
Okay. Let's not nitpick. You know what? No, no, no. I'm, I'm saying, okay, then let's take it from the recreation and give it to the townspeople. We can't ever do that.
You would have to change that by referendum.
That's what I'm saying. You can't ever do that, but you could take our sewer money and do that. What I'm saying is, please, consider everything that you do. One other thing with the leniency letter.
Please be lenient.
No, I can't. What I found wrong was that, and I'd like a copy of his letter. What I do find wrong is using the letterhead of the township, which does represent us, okay? And it wasn't that it was a mild little thing, you know, like he just got caught this very first day with some pot on him that he was going to sell. This man had eight pounds of pot in his house. Eight pounds. Oh, yeah, he was basketball coach, whatever. Oh, yeah, was he selling to our children at that time? We have to think about what we do and how we present ourselves, because that to me, and I don't care what the attorney says, I'm going to go a little bit further. I do think it's unethical. I really do think it was unethical to put to taxpayers. Myself, I was infuriated when I read it in the newspaper. I was like, "How could you do this? How could you do this?" It's not slap in the face to the police department or anything. It is. It is in a way. People, it's how the people perceive it, not just how you guys perceive it, it's how it's perceived on the outside. So I'm asking you to be very cautious with this. I mean, eight pounds is a lot.
No, Pat, I think I got your message.
Anyone else from the public want to speak?
No, this one.
Seeing no one come forward, I closed the public portion. We now have to go into...
Mr. President, can I say something?
Mr. Ferreira.
Thank you. I came to get my mail today pretty early. Did any of you receive the letter from citizens in Lake Hiawatha, North Beverlywick? Regarding a complaint?
I, I just saw it soon as I walked in, but I haven't been able to read because I've been following the gentleman. But I did get it.
Who follows up on that? Is it, do we do something, or do we turn it over to the administration?
I haven't, I haven't opened my mail yet.
Oh, okay.
I just picked it up.
Okay. I guess we'll talk about it next week.
Who's got the letter?
Everybody.
I have one.
Mayor, did you get the letter?
Yeah, I got a copy of the letter.
All right, whose auspices is it?
It will be us. We will have to handle the matter, and we will handle it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm reading it right now.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, then we need the resolution for closed session. Do I have that?
Yes, sir.
Let me find it.
You didn't find it? All right, go ahead.
Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits exclusion public from meeting certain circumstances, whereas township council opinion that such circumstances presently exist, whereas township council wishes to discuss litigation matters, whereas minutes will be kept, once the matter involving confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved. Township Council Parsippany Troy Hills public be excluded from the meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Cesaro. Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi for closed session?
Yes.
Mr. Cesaro for closed session?
Yes.
Mr. Ferreira?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Whoever I don't say after closed session, have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I don't know.
All right, sir, we're ready.
Madam Clerk, I make a motion to come back into open session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cesaro?
Yes.
Mr. Ferreira?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
And Mr. Cesaro, would you read the resolution, please?
Resolution, Township Parsippany Troy Hills authorizing a settlement agreement and general release with Martha Duckworth. Whereas Martha Duckworth, Ms. Duckworth, commenced an action against Township Parsippany Troy Hills, the township Jennifer Collins Arena Plaque collectively defendants in the Superior Court of New Jersey known as Martha Duckworth v. Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Jennifer Collins, and Arena Plaque document number MRS-L 1316-10 is subsequently removed to the United States District Court for the District of New Jersey Civil Action Number 210-CV 02617 DRD, and they ask the action. And whereas to void the cost and uncertainty of continuing litigation, Ms. Duckworth and defendants desire to resolve all disputes between them, and whereas the Ms. Duckworth and defendants have fully and fairly negotiated the dispute underlying the action and have reached an agreement, and whereas the agreement between Ms. Duckworth and defendants has been memorialized in a settlement agreement and general lease, and whereas the township will be required to pay deductible and coinsurance of $38,765.46 to the municipal excess liability joint, bless you, joint insurance fund in consideration of the settlement, now therefore be resolved as follows.